Good evening and welcome to the March 22nd, 2021 work session of Maryland City Council. Tonight, we have one item for discussion and it's about our stormwater program fee rate update. But before we get to that, we have to do a closed executive session this evening. And I'd like to put it out to the council of entertain any motions if you guys are ready to make a motion. All right, Mike, I'm going to pick you to make the make the motion. And you're on mute, Mike, you're on mute.
Notice is given to the public that the Gaithersburg mayor and city council will conduct a work session on Monday, March 29th, 7:30 PM to discuss, I'm sorry, that's the wrong one.
No, that's, that's the right one. You just have to do it in the form of a motion.
Oh, no, I was reading from a different, hang on a second. I got it. I got it. Notice of the public is I've council plan to conduct, will conduct a closed executive session immediately following the virtual session on Monday, March 22nd, 2001. The meeting is proposed to be closed pursuant to the general provisions article of the annotated code of Maryland, section 3-305B1I, the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom it has jurisdiction. The topic to be discussed is a personnel matter to conduct the city manager's six-month review. That's my motion.
Okay, Neil.
Second.
Okay, I will call the role, all those in favor say aye, any opposed say nay, council member Sesma.
Aye.
Council member Aris.
Aye.
Council member Wu.
Aye.
And council member Spiegel.
Aye.
All right, carries four zero. Thank you for that. And I will make one quick announcement that next, just to remind everybody that we have a work session next week as well on March 29th. It will be covering the 2021, 22 racial equity awareness and action plan, which was initially going to be discussed during our strategic planning session, but had been, had to be sort of separated out and we will have that discussion next Monday night. So with that, tonight we have with us Patrick Fitzgerald from our stormwater project manager, Lynn Maury, consulting project manager, Elizabeth Treadway, consulting project manager, and Beth Forbes, are from our public works department, also in charge of stormwater. And tonight we're going to talk about our stormwater program fee rate update, and I will turn it over to you guys.
Thank you, Mayor Ashman. Good evening. I'm Pat Fitzgerald, stormwater project manager, and I'm pleased to be introducing tonight's work session regarding the stormwater program fee rate update. Please bring up packet page six. This presentation will expand on the January work session in which the city's stormwater program elements were discussed in relation to an upcoming fee rate reassessment. Staff along with our consultant would have since worked to carefully analyze the program's cost components and develop appropriate fee rates for various options. Among other necessary updates, the rate reassessment takes into account five options for maintenance of common ownership community stormwater facilities. We hope to receive input on the updated rate projections as well as on how to proceed with certain key financial decisions. And now I'd like to turn the presentation over to Lynn Maury and Elizabeth Treadway.
Thank you, Pat. Elizabeth and I appreciate the opportunity to discuss the stormwater fee reassessment with you again tonight and follow up on our January 11th meeting. Next page. Tonight, we're going to present a recap of the stormwater program assessment and costs. We'll go through the stormwater program areas and the personal personnel, direct expenses and CIP costs. And then also again, discuss the common ownership facility maintenance options. And then Elizabeth will discuss the rate evaluation. Next page. Next page. So just to recap the stormwater program evaluation, we worked with staff to categorize the stormwater program into program areas that reflect the major activities performed by the stormwater program. So this covers a variety of activities, predominantly capital improvement projects and development plan review, and MS4 compliance activities, including outreach and education, SWIPS, stormwater pollution prevention plans, illicit discharge inspections, and another major component is repairs to the stormwater infrastructure. Next page. So we looked at the cost of the stormwater staff and other staff that support the stormwater program. So these charts reflect the, the cost of the stormwater staff in FY21 is $727,000 per year and distributed as you see in the pie chart. And the other staff is at $256,000 in FY21, predominantly spending their time supporting repairs and drainage and inspections work. Next page. The, the other staff that support the stormwater program include five different divisions. The most support is provided by the planning and code administration division and the operations division as shown in this chart. Next page. So the personnel costs are reflected in this table, table. In FY23, we reflect a new stormwater project manager to be added to staff to support the increased amount of CIP projects, public outreach, watershed planning, and depending on the comment, common ownership option selected, new staff resources will need to be implemented to, to support any of those options. Next page. The stormwater direct expenses reflect these six areas listed here. There's operating expenses and then contracted services, which include professional services, engineering, maintenance, and infrastructure repair. It also supports the, the restoration grants and rainscapes rewards programs. Next page. So the direct expenses are reflected in this table, staying around the 1.1 to 1.6 million dollars per year. The chart reflects the direct cost distributions in FY21 between the different stormwater program areas. And you can see that the repairs and drainage is, is the biggest portion of the direct expenses and contracted services. Next page. So we relooked at the capital improvement program, and I just wanted to go back in time to just compare what we looked at when we originally did the stormwater fee in 2015 compared to where we are now with the impervious area restoration program. So the impervious area restoration program makes up the, the biggest part of the city's CIP program. And in 2015, we did our best assessment of the area that would need to be treated, and that was 354 acres. And then we also looked at planning level cost estimates of a mixture of stream restoration and pond retrofit projects to address the impervious area restoration. And at that time, we assumed that it would, that that program would occur over a seven-year time period and cost $26 million. To support that program, the city transferred $7.7 million to cover a portion of the CIP from the general fund and from the general CIP program. Next page. So since that time, the city got its MS4 permit in 2018 and has developed an impervious area restoration plan, meeting the requirements of the permit. That the treatment area has been reduced to 303 acres and the city can use development and redevelopment credits to reduce that even further to 202 acres based on the, the MDE guidance. The, since that time, there's also been a lot of change in the way stream restoration projects are credited. There's an expert panel report that provides much more detail about how you can credit those types of projects, and it's resulting in greater credit, credit for stream restoration products, projects that at less cost than we anticipated in 2015. Also, the implementation timeframe is, is longer than we originally anticipated with the projects having to be in the ground by 2025. So a 10-year timeframe versus a seven-year timeframe that we assumed in 2015. So after the 2025, we're anticipating there will be new restoration targets, but what those will be are not known at this time. Next page. So, so based on those adjustments, we updated the CIP to reflect the current projects that the city staff has in the hopper. And we adjusted some of the watershed planning projects to reflect their recent experience with other similar projects. We implemented a pipe replacement, replacement program in FY24, assuming that that would grow over time and the city would start replacing pipe based on its age and condition. We also added a pond dredging program and and budgeted for watershed plan updates occurring in FY24 through FY26. Next page. So based on that reassessment, we have the adjustment to the capital improvement program costs with, with the bulk of it being in the CIP program, which is to address the impervious area restoration and then other projects that are for a repair of infrastructure that doesn't get the city credit towards its impervious area restoration. And it stays between, you know, two and $4 million for the most part over the next six years. Next page. So all of those costs together reflect the stormwater program that we use to do the rate evaluation. As you see here, the total is between five and a half to seven and a half million dollars in general over. It goes up and down depending on the CIP projects that are being implemented. And we also show here in green how that those costs are divided between the stormwater division and the other divisions, with the other divisions making up about 15% of the total program cost. Next page. So now I'm going to recap the common ownership facility maintenance options that we included in the rate evaluation. Next page. So we based the cost of the common ownership facility maintenance program on replacement of older facilities, and those would be phased in over a period of time, focusing on the oldest facilities and then moving into the, the next phase two, which are the 1986 through 2002 facilities. But you can see here, you know, what the, the types of these facilities are and how many of them there are in, in the city. Next page. So, you know, as I said, we'll, we'll focus on replacing those four oldest ponds and underground structures. And then the 86 through 2002 facilities were scheduled to be replaced over seven years. And all of these options assume that the common ownership communities would continue to be, remain responsible for mowing and trash removal for the facilities. Next page. So we looked at five different options for the common ownership facilities. And this table shows you what types of expenses or reimbursement were included in the, those options. So option A was an enforcement option where the, the city would not take over any maintenance or repair of the facilities and would increase their enforcement program. Option B is for future takeover, where the city would take over maintenance after the common ownership facilities were brought into compliance by the, the common ownership communities. So this would result in a direct expense increase for the, the future maintenance as the city started to take those over. Option C is permanent takeover. The city takes over ownership and responsibility for the compliance repairs and future maintenance. So that is a, both a CIP and a direct expense to the city. Option D was a reimbursement option where the city would make compliance repairs and, you know, based on an agreement with the owners, they would reimburse the city based on the cost that the city incurred for the repairs. We assumed that not all of the communities would opt into this program. So we assumed a 75%, 75% participation by the communities in this type of program. So this would reflect both a CIP increase, but also repair costs being reimbursed to the city. And then option E was a temporary takeover where the city takes the, the, the facilities and makes the repairs, any necessary repairs, and then hands the facilities back over to the communities to continue the future maintenance. So there was no direct expense for maintenance in this option, but just the increased CIP cost. So all of these options will involve increased staff resources, whether it be, you know, to, to do increased enforcement for the facilities or to manage maintenance and repair of the facilities. Next page. So this table reflects just the, the CIP costs for these common ownership options. And as you can see, there's not a big change. The, the CIP costs run from, you know, 200 to $250,000 per year based on the schedule that we had laid out for repair of the facilities. So now Elizabeth is going to talk through the rate evaluation. Next page.
And the next page, please. So we covered this a little bit the last time we made the presentation. Obviously, we work with the finance staff and your leadership on, on understanding what variable cost factors should be used in looking at the rates and the rate structures themselves. And so we worked on establishing various financial modifiers in order to understand what can be done, what will happen ultimately over time, but anticipating issues such as establishing a dedicated operating reserve, a dedicated CIP reserve. And from those financial factors, we build ultimately the cash flow model that shows demand for cash on hand to cover operating expenses from year-to-year basis. Next page, please. There are a couple of really important policies that we would like you to consider and that we discussed at length with staff, again, with the manager, with Dennis, to also get direction and input on how to deal with the estimated cash on hand. In your current FY21 budget, it is estimated that there'll be approximately 21 million or $24 million, sorry, cash on hand at the end of this fiscal year. Part of that, if you recall, was the contribution that had been made from the general fund in order to support the anticipated growth in capital that had not taken place over the past several years and therefore had built up a substantial cash reserve, which is a great position to be in. It serves your community extremely well to be able to support this program effectively when we were working on predicting what would happen regulatorily and what ultimately happened. And so part of the policy consideration that we developed was to look at establishing dedicated reserves. These would be established in a way that would be protected over time, would be there for emergency purposes, would ensure a strong financial position with the unknown in front of you of how things will unfold regulatorily after this cycle of your permit and to be able to project out that you have sufficient reserves on hand to protect both your operating costs and protecting your capital investment strategy. So in this case, we looked at communities of your size, communities who had had utilities in place over time and established two principles to create these reserves. The first for your capital reserve program was to look at a projection of estimated capital expenditures over the next 10 years and take an average of those 10 years and set aside three years of that average total. We then looked at operating cost, again, another policy of other communities established an operating reserve to protect for emergency purposes, potential catastrophic loss, an event that would immediately require triggering the use of these funds and establish that 180-day or six-month operating cost reserve was a very conservative yet secure position to suggest. And in this case, those two reserves established in fiscal year 22, we would estimate it approximately $8 million. That would, of the 24 million on hand, would allow to be protected immediately. In addition, we discussed the fact that the general fund had made a contribution to support this program initially, recognizing that over time, we were attempting to predict what the state would do and what you would be required to accomplish and suggest that it's appropriate to return those funds to the general fund. And that's approximately $7.7 million. So immediately approximately 15, a little more than $15 million of the cash on hand would be put to different use, establishing permanent reserves for this fund and returning contributions to the general fund. Next slide, please. That left us with how do we manage the residual, the approximately $9 million that is not dedicated through either of the first two strategies? And we looked at three different options for use of those funds. One would be to spend it down rapidly. Dedicate and, and all capital costs would be covered by this reserve till the balance would be zero. Depending on which of the approaches to the HOAs that you might choose, the different amount of time it would take if that was the strategy used. A second method we looked at was appropriating an equal amount over the study period, reducing whatever costs were necessary, stabilizing the rates, but simply on an average spending down that amount each year. And then we looked at a third option, and this is the option that we really encourage you to consider as a recommendation. And in this case, we would use those funds, you would use those funds to stabilize the rates so that you would draw down the amount that is there of the nine million over time. But you would be able to give a very predictable steady rate to the public, projecting costs over time, using those resources, both the interest earnings on the $9 million, but also to use that $9 million to give you a very stable rate projection over time. And that's the one that in fact, we selected to recommend to you and use all of them actually in doing the initial analysis. But the rates that you'll see us present are based on those stabilizing use of that $9 million. Next slide, please. In establishing the operating and capital reserves, each of the options for managing the issues with the HOAs creates a different level of capital reserve. And I simply wanted to demonstrate that to you. And that's because each of their costs, as Lynn went over with you, do vary on an annualized basis. And we then did an average of those. And so you can see there's a different level of reserve that would be necessary to meet that test of 180 days of operating expense or the three-year average for capital. So the choice of the HOA strategy will influence ultimately some of the numbers that come out through this analysis. But option C is the one that is the permanent takeover and would result in the highest growth rate of your costs as Lynn demonstrated for both capital and operating direct costs because of the expense of maintaining and improving those facilities. So there is a little bit of variability, which ultimately the rate update could be accommodated by using that third option on the reserves that are on the cash that's on hand that could still stabilize the rate. So though these may be variable, you still have the ability to keep those rates very stable over time. Next slide, please. This slide simply demonstrates how the five different options impact the utilization of cash on hand. So using option three to stabilize rates from year to year, the amount that would be used by any one of the five options that deal with the HOAs is variable. And that variability is driven by the fact that your cost projection from a year-to-year basis for existing operating costs and the HOA costs are variable. And that's driven more by capital, the fact that when you're managing infrastructure, capital expenditures vary from year to year. And that's all this slide really represents is that there is variability in the use of the cash on hand dollars that influences the rate at which you would spend those dollars down and return them to the public through a stabilized rate strategy. Next slide, please. So this is running those five scenarios for the HOA represents the projection of potential rates that would, could be stabilized under each of these scenarios. I've been asked, why is option B least expensive? In fact, option B really is not. It's the way that the rate model took into consideration those funds on hand and the rate at which they would be spent down. That is simply an anomaly of the way in which that model projected the use of those cash on hand funds. But in fact, the result of, of any one of the options chosen is that you have the enviable position, actually, all the communities I work with. You have a very enviable position to have such a strong financial threshold to work with, such a strong foundation that you can say to your public, we are going to stabilize these rates. We have the ability to do that. We have the ability to stay strong financially, to protect this infrastructure, to invest in its future, while being able to say to you, we have a sound fiscal policy to stabilize our rates. And this actually can be projected out through the future. As costs do grow and they will grow, you will be in a very sound position to have very moderate increases should they need to occur over time. So it's, again, I would say to you, a very enviable position to be in. And the yellow highlighted area is actually a, a recommendation we would have to you for both the for both the program and your rate approach. Taking responsibility for your HOAs gives you a very sound strategy for ensuring that those facilities are contributing in a positive way, are being maintained, and you know they are performing the way you need them to perform in order to ensure that both quantity and quality controls are being well managed. The other four options are certainly doable. And as you can see from a fiscal perspective, they give you, again, a great stability and forecast in how you want to move forward. The next slide, please. So where do we go from here? Next slide. We are truly looking for your feedback and guidance to understand how we can finalize the evaluation for you and coordinate those results with your financial team. We do want to recommend to you that on an annual basis, you review your cash position to ensure that the factors that we used are following true, that in fact, the projects, as you project them, are moving forward at the rate at which you anticipated, and that you are updating your model in a way that gives you that forward thinking and anticipates what may need to be, of course, correction when your permit is renewed. So it's important that the model be tested, validated, and continuously reviewed. And we certainly recommend that as a sound additional policy to follow in your financial management. That concludes our discussion with you, and we look forward to your feedback.
Thank you so much, Elizabeth, and all of you. I really feel like this analysis was worth the wait. I'm glad we, we went through this exercise. And I see Neil's hand up right away. We're gonna go to Neil.
All right, thanks, Mayor, and thanks for the presentation. I agree with what Judd said. It's long awaited and very thorough. It strikes me as being very similar to the type of analysis that I was used to seeing at the HOA where we were anticipating future capital expenses and making sure there were reserves just in case. My key question at this point is how to evaluate the risk of taking on the HOA facilities when we don't have any clear picture what the condition is? I would imagine that, in particular, if an HOA knew that they had a facility with some serious issues, they'd be much more inclined to hand them off to us and let us take over. What is your thinking about how to ameliorate that risk?
Lynn, would you like to have page 21 brought up that shows the distribution of the types of facilities and the analysis we went through? I thought that might be helpful.
Yeah.
We could see that.
So yes, we did go out in the field to look at several of the older facilities. And there, there is substantial work to be done on a few of them. And we based the cost of the analysis on, on similar types of projects. The city staff is also going out and inspecting other facilities. And so they're aware of their condition. I didn't, I don't think we saw one that was in such bad shape that, you know, that we, you know, stepped back and said, oh my, this is going to, you know, be a huge cost. But we did prioritize the ones we went out to as the oldest ones, which would be in the worst shape.
All right, that's a terrific answer. I just wanted to make sure that we actually had a very clear picture of what we were getting ourselves into potentially with taking these over. Thank you very much. I'm really very comfortable with, with everything you've presented in terms of planning and, and fees. And the option that you recommended seems like the one that I would have proposed had you not already recommended it. Thank you.
All right, we're gonna go over to Rappu.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, and thank you very much for the presentation. I agree, and I think that both the funding option three, as well as the option C, is the way to go. You know, it's, as I said before, it's the fair thing to do. And it's good that the modeling actually shows that it's, it's an economically sound way to go. The one question I have is, you know, with respect to the return of the funding to the general fund, were there any considerations as to utilizing that, that funding for improvements to stormwater infrastructure? And if so, what were they? And then ultimately, why was the decision made to recommend to return that funding to the general fund? Thanks.
I'll answer that initially. We discussed that at length and what we understood of the investment strategy over time. And so we established, I believe Lynn, it's in FY '24, correct me if I'm wrong, an approach to the pipe network as a part of this overall program. We did take a pretty conservative position in tackling problems around the community. But I think with the guidance and direction that we received from the manager's office, that the return of the funds was the better use at this time because of the sizable cash on hand that will be spent down over time. One of the reasons for choosing option three and not immediately spending down all the cash on hand is to be able to do just that, sir, to be able to protect the infrastructure, to recognize that should conditions change, that there be an awareness through the increased inspection program that in fact, there is an immediate need. You do have immediate cash that can support that by maintaining it within the fund and still make the contribution back to the general fund. That's, that's our, from a technical perspective, review. But I'm, I'm sure that the manager would probably want to weigh in on that strategy.
Because I, I think you covered it very well, actually. I don't, I don't know if I would add anything to that. Just wanna check with Rob to be sure that it addressed your question.
It does, and it makes sense. Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to Ryan. Then Ryan.
Harkening back to the very beginning, you know, five, six, seven years ago, whatever it was, of these discussions when we were creating our, our stormwater program. And I recall discussions where, you know, I expressed some frustration with the fact that we were making educated guesses through no fault of anyone here at this meeting, but the, you know, the mandate imposed and trying to figure out, based on, again, educated guesses, how to proceed to ensure that we had sufficient funds amassing in order to address what we knew were going to be, these mandates in the out years under our permit. And it was philosophically challenging for all of us. But for me, it was sort of hard to wrap my brain around the idea that we were going to be basically asking to collect up a bunch of money from our property owners without fully knowing the extent to which we were going to have to expend, expend that money. Of course, you know, you know, in the abstract, it's for an important cause. We're a city that's committed to environmental improvement. And we understand the purpose of the entire stormwater protection regime. But it was just sort of frustrating to basically be creating the system hoping that we were gonna collect enough money in the out years. And now it turns out, we've collected enough that we're sitting kind of pretty. And I don't want to, I don't want to oversell it either because I know that these obligations continue out for many, many years into the future. But as I understand it from our presenters tonight, basically, we're sitting pretty. And I think it's wonderful that we're able to transfer that $7.7 million that was originally contributed by the general fund to subsidize the revenues from the program, that we're able to transfer it back into the general fund. But I think it sort of kind of proves the point that I was concerned about seven years ago. And it's just sort of, again, philosophically, sort of hard to wrap, wrap my brain around the idea that we're going to, you know, put a plan in motion for the next five, 10 years when we still don't know what the next permit says. And the last permit ended up saying things differently than we thought it might say. So that's my long preface to a question. First, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with the recommendations that have been made. Again, still a little bit uncomfortable with the idea of taking over the maintenance of the HOA facilities. I understand why it's the recommended approach. I think financially, it's, you know, fairly in line and fairly conservative, given the cost benefit analysis. But I just kind of have a little heartburn about the idea of sort of coming in to private property owners and saying, we're gonna take over your burden for you because we don't know if you're gonna be able to do it yourself. Even though I understand that those facilities treat stormwater from all over the city, not just from those, those HOAs. But one of the things that you mentioned in your presentation is we don't yet know, you know, what the time horizons and what the credits and other things are gonna be in the next round of permits. Do we have a better sense based on our last experience and based on working with the, the state agencies? Do we have a sort of a better heads up on what the next round of permits are going to look like in terms of obligations to be able to plug in to the, the formulas that you all have used, the models that you all have used in your presentation tonight?
I can, I can answer that. So I, I think we do have a pretty good idea. You know, it, it could obviously change. A couple of regulation changes here and there can have drastic swings on, on the CIP costs. But from talking with the state and other local jurisdictions, we think that we have a pretty good idea of the next permit term is, is gonna be not quite the 20% that we had to do this first permit term, but likely will be 10% spread over five years, so 2% each year. So that's the assumptions that we're using in our financial models and things like that. But obviously, you know, huge caveat that, that can change at any time, so.
Right, right. And of course, we, you know, we pride ourselves on being fiscally conservative and we're a pay-as-you-go city. But it's just kind of always tricky when you're trying to set a rate and you worry about end up, ending up sort of over collecting from the property owners. Again, we've got to do the best we can with the information that we have today. But obviously, we want to try to avoid situations where we're over collecting and sitting on, you know, piles of money. But again, we're gonna be spending it out over time. And the model that was presented today with the recommendations, I really like the fact, as the presenters said, that it allows us to keep the rate essentially pretty flat with some very minor tweaks maybe over the course of, of the outlined years. And I believe, I believe you called it a very enviable position.
Yes, very.
So I, I understand the benefit of that, but we sort of always have to balance that against the idea of whether, whether or not we're, you know, we're collecting and sitting on too much. So again, I think the recommendations made are, are fine and make sense. But just kind of want to put some of that historical context in place for the public as, as we're discussing this.
Thanks, Ryan. Before we go to Loriann and then, and then Mike, I, I just want to add just a little bit more of historical context because this was about seven years ago when we started getting into the real, real details of how we would structure our stormwater fee. And I was on the council, Mike was on the council, you were on the council. None of us wanted to overcollect. At any point, none of us went overcollect. But the information we did have at the time, seven years ago, was that we had to remediate 20% of our stormwater facilities within five years. And we were pay-as-you-go. And it was just a matter of time before the MS4 permit was released that would, that would codify this requirement. So we scrambled to, to meet what was the best knowledge at the time. And it's true, none of us want to overcollect. I just want to make sure people realize that.
And Mr. Mayor, I didn't want to suggest otherwise, but the, the point of the context was to say, this is a difficult situation to be in when you're trying to your best to project out what's gonna happen in the future without knowing. And what ended up happening after our best guess and our attempt to be conservative and responsible without overcollecting seven years ago. And now we look back and see, it's very interesting to see kind of how it played out over these seven years. So that was my only point, certainly wasn't suggesting that anybody involved seven years ago was trying to overcollect.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I, no, I get that. And being pay-as-you-go is, is a very admirable thing. It's a very unusual thing for, for any government. But it, it has its downsides. And, and, and this is one where you just have to take a guess about how much you have to collect. And sometimes you get it right and sometimes you don't. But anyway, let's go to Loriann.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for the presentation explaining the recommendations. I did have a quick question about the option D. Can you tell me a little bit more about the option D and why we wouldn't want to choose that option over the other recommended options?
Lynn, do you want to discuss, describe option D? Or Patrick, either one, it's the reimbursement.
If we can go back to page 23. So option D has the city working with the communities to execute agreements and taking over maintenance for those communities that want to participate. And if they decide to participate as part of the agreement, they would reimburse the city back for the costs over a period of time. So that option, I don't know if Elizabeth, if you want to talk about the rate impacts of that.
No, the rate, the rate impacts are relatively stable. Again, as you saw for all of them. I think the, the critical difference here, first of all, is an assumption that they would want you to have an agreement where they have to pay you over and above what they are already paying in rates. They require, that would require you to negotiate an agreement with each one of them. And that it is a short-term fix. It allows the repairs to be done, but it's a one-time improvement. The ongoing operation would revert back to the owners. And so they would be reimbursing the city for the expenditures that you would incur. And yes, those monies would, over time, assuming there would be an agreement that it would be paid back on an incremental basis, not immediately all at once, but allowed for a negotiated return with potentially some interest perhaps on that money as well. But it does not ensure ongoing operation and maintenance of the facility. It is a one-time improvement with a reimbursement requirement back to the city. We felt that that would not be as attractive, nor would it ensure that you would not be put in the position of having to go back and enforce making the relationship perhaps a bit more difficult in your working relationship to the owners and making sure that those facilities do perform the way that you need them to perform over time.
Yeah, I, I would just add, Loriann, that, you know, we have to remember ultimately we're responsible. So we, we, we could make this, as Liz described, this sort of one-time investment that we don't get really any real assurance that our investment will be maintained at a level that we would require and that the state would require of us. And we could find ourselves sort of in this boomerang situation where we do it once and then we find ourselves down the road needing to do it again because it wasn't maintained to that, to that level. So for me, it keeps coming back to how do we minimize Because it wasn't maintained to that, to that level. So for me, it keeps coming back to how do we minimize? How do we manage our risk? Right? Yeah.
All right. So I wanted to be clear that. I saw the difference in costs over the years. And so while they're minimal in savings with the reimbursement costs. It sounds like option C offers the best guarantee that we can continue to maintain the, the infrastructure. And still meet our. Requirements. So. I'll, I'll support staff's recommendations as well.
Thank you Loriann. We'll go to Mike.
Okay, thank you. And again, I'll echo my colleagues with the appreciation for the very thorough. Report here and assessment as well as the recommendations. And I guess I want to go back. Seven years as well and remind everybody that it wasn't just about. Trying to ensure that to our fee payers. Our, our property owners that we weren't. It wasn't an intent to over, to overcollect. To build up a surplus, but we were also taking on and assuming some considerable risk at the time because we didn't know the state of. The conditions of many of these facilities. So we go back and look at slide page 21. That shows the number of the, of facilities. I think. We are still assuming some risk if we do option six in terms of the overall cost of. Repairs. Or, and or, and I think we have to think about this, that in some of these cases, repairs aren't going to be adequate to address. Compliance. With these regulations. So in some cases, it'll be complete. I assume that there'll be some engineering and complete replacement of facilities with more up-to-date. Technology. So you know, we're still assuming some risk and even returning. A significant amount to the, to the general fund. We are going to probably be. There'll be considerable expenditures as well in updating in particular the oldest facilities. I think it is best option C for us to take these over because. It allows the city to set the stand, the same standard across all of these facilities and then maintain them. Those facilities to that standard. I, I believe we have the staff that can do that. And the knowledge and experience to be able to handle that. So. Overall, I like the recommendation. I like the fact that, that we're, we're looking at a sustainable fee structure. And a stable fee, fee structure, which is the most important thing that we can offer to our, to our property owners. In terms of paying that fee. So. It's still within, I, I think that the, the projected fees are within kind of the. The range that we had talked about actually about seven years ago about where we would end up at this point. So. That is, I think, a very nice thing to see. So I, so to preface, that is the preface, I guess my question would be, what? Are we looking at in terms of the actual, if we go back then and look at. Just, I'll just reference that, that figure, the com, of the common ownership facilities and the dates that they were built. Which of those are going to require the, the greatest amount of work? Not just in terms of repair, but which one of the, which of those are going to be total replacement? Of, of the existing system with a new facility that is much, much more appropriate to the current state of affairs in terms of regulating stormwater runoff.
So we do have about. Four or five HOA facilities that we have planned for the CIP program for, as part of our meeting, our MS4 credit. So those. Are primarily dry ponds that we're going to convert into wet ponds. So those would be. Sort of the big ticket items, but those were facilities that we were kind of already planning to, you know, to do something with in our CIP dollars. So. Beyond that, I mean, those are still the types of facilities that we'll probably see the most issues with. Just because there's embankments involved, there's riser structures, there's just a lot of structural elements to those. So, and, and those are kind of fall within that era also of being the older facilities that are due for replacement. So. Anything that's newer era, you know, like small micro bioretention areas, things like that. We're still kind of within the. The lifetime of those facilities.
So I guess I'll just remind everybody that seven years ago, we were just beginning to see development projects and that would utilize environmental site design. To take the, the geographic, geological. And hydroscopic features of the development to. Help design the projects, the stormwater projects that would do the most to reduce the. TMDL and you know, retain stormwater on the property before it ran off into, you know, the nearest tributary. So. It's nice to see where we've ended up at this point. So. I, I like the analysis that we see the, the projections of. The money, the, the dollars that we're going to see here and how we're going to budget for in the future. So. I, I find the recommendation to be a very good, solid recommendation to the council on this. Thanks.
Thanks, Mike. I saw Neil's hand go up again. Go ahead.
Yeah, listening to one of Ryan's comments, I wanted to make, to clarify one point and then discuss some. Potential ramifications of, so first of all, we are. I just want to confirm that we are talking about taking over HOA facilities on a voluntary basis, right? HOAs won't, won't be required to turn those facilities over to the city, but they'll be. Offered the chance, which seems like a great offer considering that it takes that expense and. And worry off their books. Am I correct on that front?
Yeah, that's correct. I don't know if Lynn Board, if you want to. Between being voluntary and involuntary, but. But yes, that, that is how I would see it going.
All right. And I'd just like to point out there may be, shockingly maybe, but there might be some selling involved in this because I know that. Historically, long ago, the, there was some discussion here in Kettland's of. The city taking ownership of the back alleys. And the HOA opted to keep them because they didn't trust the city to maintain them up to their high standards. Which in retrospect was a horrible expensive mistake, but. It was their mistake to make. And so we would. Probably want to reassure any of the homeowners associations or some, provide some assurance or even guarantee. That if the city takes over the facilities, they'll be maintained to some very high level of standards.
Lynn, I think you, Lynn Board, I think you wanted to add something in there.
Yeah, I mean, I think certainly we're going to have to develop agreements. One to have the right of access to the properties over and above. We do have some standard agreements. For probably most of the stormwater. Facilities in the city where we do have a right to inspect. But we would have to expand those agreements to allow us to enter the properties to maintain. As well, and then also obligate the homeowners associations or the common ownership. Communities to do the maintenance as well. So there will be a negotiation. And, and development of agreements with all of the various property owners.
Thank you Lynn. So I wanted to open it up. If there's anybody from the public who'd like to speak on this topic, just click on the Zoom raise hand feature. And we'll call on you. Going once, going twice. I don't see any takers. Okay. So. Tanisha, I'm assuming that staff feels guided here.
I think we feel guided.
Okay. Well then, as a reminder, I want to thank everybody. Elizabeth, Lynn, this is an outstanding report. Beth, Pat, you and all staff who were involved in helping. Put all the, get all these numbers together. It was, it was so helpful. It was just, it was really, really. Important and everybody's coming to a decision here. We really appreciate it. So. So with that, I will remind everybody that we have a work section, a work session next week. Join us to discuss. Our racial equity efforts and then after this meeting, we're going to convene. A separate executive session as mentioned earlier. And until next time, let's do great things, Gaithersburg. We are adjourned.